Good evening and welcome to the Greater Albany Public School Board District. Call is in order at seven. Please rise and join me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It wasn't seven. We were using one of our old agendas. I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Would you not see any comments from the public tonight, correct?
Correct.
And we will move to board business. The board will nominate and vote on chair and vice chair positions. And I would move to nominate Dr. P. Morse as chair of the Greater Albany Public School Board.
I would second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Dr. Morse. And I would also like to nominate Director Brad Wilson as vice chair for the Greater Albany Public School Board.
Before I comment further, I second that. If elected, will Board Member Wilson serve? Has anybody talked to this, or is this will be his comeuppance for not being here tonight?
No, I have talked to solely Mr. Wilson.
Okay. I would second the motion.
I'm in favor.
So, okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Co-chairs.
Okay, next is the pre-planning meeting schedule. It has come out. It looks, it looks good to me. I know we looked at it at the pre-planning meeting. Anybody have any issue with that?
Just a process question, I guess. Generally, whoever's in the room and whoever's meeting is good for conversation and it's good for getting input, but ultimately, I would anticipate the chair being responsible for the board's part of the development of that agenda. So, I just hope that you're, you see a copy of whatever it is that's going to go out before it goes out.
My intent would be to be at all the meetings other than if my schedule doesn't allow.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
And it says decisions between time of pre-planning meeting, either eight or one superintendent. My issue there is I know we do these on Friday and quite frankly, every other Friday at work, you know, so if we can look at it, we can figure out a time and it'd be, it's well in advance. My schedule's way in advance. So, we can figure that out. You don't care eight or one?
No, eight or one. As long as we're kind of generally working on those parameters, we're fine.
Yeah, it'd be months out, for sure.
Yep, we're good.
Okay, next on the, is the board meeting start time? The discussion is whether or not we're going to move from seven to six. My understanding of what the board or the chair, everyone on the board wants to do is move it to six o'clock unless we have a listening session before it. That way, if we have a listening session, it's kind of hard to get a listening session in before the seven o'clock meeting. Is that what everyone else understands and is good with?
Hard to get it in before a six o'clock meeting.
Right.
Right.
Exactly. So, if we had a listening session...
From five to six thirty, as we'd been doing.
We'd just have to go to seven at that time.
Right, right, right.
So, normally six. If we have a listening session, we do seven. That way, the public would be able to be off from work and be part of the listening session. We don't want to deny people the opportunity to do that. Everybody okay with that?
I concur.
Okay. These aren't things we have to vote on, are they? We do?
The board meeting start time has a recommended motion. That's the one that needs it.
Okay, alright. I move, or I can't. Do I hear a motion?
I, I move to do just as you've described and we've agreed on by consensus.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next is board meeting location. We have that promulgated out. I think our goal is to have, is it one a quarter?
With a listening session in an area?
Yeah. Is that, that's what my memory is?
Generally the discussion.
So, basically, I think we're going to, instead of every other meeting at a school, we're doing every third meeting at a school. We're trying to just keep listening sessions going. It takes a lot of work unfortunately for district staff to set these up in other places, but we believe it's very important for us to go to other places. One of the things we're trying to do as a board is being able to take input from people not in the building. Go ahead.
I'm kind of disappointed you're having your meetings on the same Mondays that we're having our city council meetings.
That was a strategic planning on our part? Just kidding.
I, I didn't know that.
I was happy to see him on the second Monday, because then I could get here and listen. And I got here tonight. Sometimes our Monday meetings go a little longer and beyond six o'clock, but not very often.
Sure, I understand. Sounds, sounds like you'll be able to catch the seven ones, no matter what.
Was there a reason to change to first, or I guess it's the fourth Monday today, isn't it?
It's, today it is, yes.
Is there a reason for that, rather than having it on the third?
Not to my knowledge.
Traditionally, they've been on the third Monday.
No, second and fourth.
Second and, if we've had two, they've been on the second and fourth, I believe.
They primarily rotate the second and fourth, occasionally on the first and third. It just depends on the months. They fall on the first and third, but this next year, there's only one month that they're the first and the third. So, it's, it's been the second and fourth for...
They're all showing up on the second Mondays.
Well, one, one nice thing about technology now, if you, if you want to see it, you can always view it on YouTube after the fact.
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Go ahead.
We have shied away from it in the last couple of years, but earlier on, the school district and the city council would meet together once a year annually in a joint session, and that way, we can talk about growth and opportunities between each other. I would recommend that Ms. Green work with the city council to see if we can get that annual meeting back on the books again.
It's on ours. List of things, I don't think we have a fixed on it.
I, I think that would have some value.
Well, no, you kind of, I was going to bring that up on my...
Liaison?
Yeah, I, I talked to Mayor Johnson and I just, offhandedly, I said, same thing you said. I said, I know in the past we have, and it's something he has already begun the ball rolling, but I think he wants to give the new superintendent some time. I think that was part of the issue, but yeah, I think you're right. People, people understand that and I think it's on people's, it's on people's radar.
We'll work on communicating with him.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Point of clarification. Are public comments now going to be allowed during the meetings? My understanding is that in the past is that they are not.
Not until we get the ability to take online or call-ins and things like that.
Wilson is allowed to make a public comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm stuttering.
You are a hundred percent correct. I shouldn't acknowledge that, and that's a rookie chairman. Sorry about that. Okay, so board meeting location, we've talked about listening sessions. We've talked a little bit about those. We're planning on having them...
Quarterly.
Quarterly, so every three months, and we're talking about having those in a location out in the district. Correct? Everybody okay with that?
It sounds like we're trying to combine a listening session with the time that we're going to meet at that school. It sounds like a great idea.
Yep.
I think, I think that'll, great idea.
Great, okay. And we're up to superintendent comments.
Thank you. Appreciate the welcome, except for the lanyard comment.
Hey.
So, just a couple of things to follow up on that. We met the other day and we're about six months' case from having the hardware in place here to have cameras on you as you speak, right? So, it won't just be live streamed, but there'll actually be an opportunity then for people to identify who's speaking and that kind of stuff. So, that'll be six months. Most of that is being held up just by availability of components?
Yeah, you're exactly right. So, we, we met with an outfit that does, you know, boardroom and other environments for automated camera systems and audio tracking, all that kind of stuff. And right now, it is a camera supply issue. It looks like it's about six months out from design approval to actually sourcing the hardware.
So, we'll start right now with just the way we've done it. Listening sessions will occur in the same way and we'll set where those will occur and get those out. So, in terms of my own transition here, I think over the last five months, I have met with the administrators in the district, both central office and all the principals in the district and the vice principals, and just got to know them each as individuals, put them through a battery of questions. And what I've found is the same thing that the search firm found as they interviewed people when they look for candidates, which is a real readiness on all part, all parts of the district to move forward and to focus on kids. I'm really excited about that. It was one of the things that created confidence in me in coming to the district, just the idea that people were ready to move forward. I think the, if I could sum up that yearning in one word, it would be stability, and you're only going to grow with stability. And so, I'm, I'm really happy to do that. We're going to continue to listen in the next two months to community leaders and meet with any and all. Chris has already got a schedule for me. Super excited to do that. In the fall, and we've got a little, a few bugs to work out, I'll be joining the chambers tour to, to understand the area industry and their needs and look for opportunities there. I think I'm going to be joined in this cohort by Michael Thompson, and so, I look forward to that. But beyond that, I would say that just really look forward to putting things in place that create one team here, that create interdependence and trust with each other and department by department, building to building, district office to building, building to district office, and really try to begin to tie that all together. In the audience tonight, thank you so much for coming, is our new business manager. Like to introduce at this time Jane Nofziger. And you wanted to say a few words, Jane?
I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I've worked at North Saniam for 12 years, learned a lot, but I believe this will be a challenge, but it is an exciting challenge for me, and so I just thank you for that opportunity.
Welcome.
Welcome. We're really excited to have you here.
So, I had to sit on my hands because I pledged that I wouldn't recruit, but Case took care of some of that. And then, I was just so excited the day that my secretary came down and wanted to fight me because Jane was leaving. But just want to put it on the record, this was Jane's decision, but I'm, I'm super excited and have a great deal of trust. She was the business manager for my first year in the North Saniam. We worked together for 12 years. She had previously been at Limbent Lincoln ESD as a business manager and brings a wealth of knowledge. And what's your great question? How do, how do they, what does their closet look like, or something like that? That's right. So, when she's looking for an employee, she's looking for that quality, and she has it herself. And so, super happy to have her, so.
Just, I guess, point of clarification question. Again, welcome. You, you are a resident and have been for a while of this area, right? So, not only is there the opportunity to come here, you're, you're, you're cutting your monthly gas bill by doing so, right? Very innovative of you.
Forced choice, right? So, that's about it. Just really looking forward to working with people. I have yet to run into someone who would say, "I don't want to be a team member. I don't want to work with other people." I think that I will take them at their word. We will move forward, and I really am very confident that things will go well. That's it.
Alright, well, we're excited to have you and so fantastic to have you here at the first meeting. Gee, board reports is next. Michael, do you have anything?
No, I just, you know, in this, this summertime, I did attend the OSBA summertime conference. And I'm bringing, bringing back to the superintendent some ideas of subjects. I had a, went to a great workshop on using the student voices, the students that we get and, and their peers, how we can use them collaboratively at the board, including Tathan Wildon.
Oh, yeah.
From North Saniam was one of the student presenters. But just, it gives me a great view of like trends in education and, and things happening at the legislature and things like that. So, it was a good, it was a good two days.
Great. Roger, do you have anything?
Well, a, a subject, a question, an update report on central school and our desire and request to get moving with improvements and installation of an HVAC system. I think part of what we approved was a concept of better design. Have we gone out with an RFP? Where are we on that?
So, Skip from HMK would actually do a good job of giving us the most up-to-date status, but the short of it is it looks like trying to acquire, again, the hardware is going to be a next summer project along with just the disruption to the school in general, the students in the building and the amount of abatement and things that would need to happen in order to make that be a safe space. Skip, do you have anything you'd like to add more specifically in a more recent update?
We're starting design soon. Electrical hardware, like you were saying, will dictate the finish of the project. A lot of stuff in between, and certainly want to walk, work around with an occupied school, for sure.
Okay, if, if we could get that done, I mean, that not doing anything or not doing the job while kids are in the school, if that is the prohibitive factor in keeping that project for getting the things done, might we look at other options for two weeks or a month, or whatever that is? I don't know if that's doable or not, but just off the top of my head, as an example, the Fair Expos got conference rooms that probably if we put our heads together could, could, could host all of the students in classes, and that's just in, in two minutes as a response to that. I'm not comfortable consciously and purposely going through another winter in that building when the spot we're in.
Yeah, just to be clear, when we do projects, we look at critical path, and though there are challenges with occupied school and there are other abatement things we need to consider for, and historic building, the critical path in this case is the electrical gear. It's, it's hitting all construction projects. And so, for instance, an electrical panel, 400 amps are over, which is a typical panel you would get for a normal-sized project, let alone this one is going to be higher. They're 12 months out. They're 12 to 14 months, and so, that's, that's dictating our, our timeline unfortunately.
May I ask a question, sir? One of the things that we see in construction projects, so if we jumped into something like that, Roger, in October, I don't know that you could guarantee that they aren't out the rest of the year just because of product availability.
Well, you wouldn't do that unless you knew you had the product available, right? I mean, so, okay, but I, I guess aside from this meeting, if, if I could get an update, I don't know if it's monthly, I don't know if it's biweekly, but if it's, I don't want this to be out of sight, out of mind. And I do think if we're looking at next summer, that further conversation about how to better accommodate those students this winter would be in order.
Okay, appreciate that.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, we actually have a bit of a celebrity with us tonight. I would like to congratulate Assistant Superintendent Harlan on her award this summer and recognition of your hard work that you do for our district. I really appreciate it. And it's got to be great being a superintendent, coming in and having a left-hand person to help you that has just been recognized as Office Minister of the Year.
Congratulations, man. Congratulations.
I really appreciate that. I, I am grateful of the team that I work with and the folks from the team who made that nomination. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, a once-in-a-lifetime thing to be recognized by your peers across the state, so I appreciate that very much.
I would only add that I have just been so impressed by Lisa's work ethic. Her calendar is the thickest populated calendar I've ever seen, and Chris Green isn't even working on that calendar, right? So, but I just, I think that Lisa puts in just a great deal of work every day, has command of detail, and I applaud her for the award.
Thank you.
Okay, so our student board members aren't going to be here this month or next month. Is that correct? Is that the norm? So, they'll be back in September. Consent agenda is next. First thing up is the personnel licensed.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Personnel Licensed as Presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I two Personnel Classified.
I move to approve Personnel Classified as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I three Regular Board Meeting Minutes for six thirteen twenty-two.
I move to approve the minutes of six thirteen twenty-two Regular Board Meeting as presented.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I four Minutes for six twenty twenty-two Regular Board Meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of six twenty twenty-two Regular Board Meeting as presented.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're at J. Old Business. Board, go ahead. You got this. Board Policy Section E, Superintendent.
So, this is from the Policy Rewrite Committee. There's board representatives on the committee.
Michael and I.
And you guys have reviewed, and the busing is on hold. But other than that, it's ready to be recommended for approval. Section E.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve Policy Section E as presented by the Policy Rewrite Committee.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, reports, nothing on there. Bond business reports. Mr. Case and David.
Yep, Skip Hamilton will be presenting the monthly bond report.
Good evening. From the May report, we had West Albany High continuing to do closeout work. And Gerding was expecting to do a window replacement as opposed to repair in the administrative area. There were several post-contract work projects that were going on. The gender-neutral restroom project, FSC restroom remodel project, as well as the door security project. So, they were all anticipated to finish before school starts, except for the gender-neutral restroom project with the door long lead. And I think we talked about that last time. I'm expecting to have a solution recommended, a solution we can recommend to the district this week that will allow us to use the restroom as students return. So, hopefully, we'll have that in hand. Transportation project is going very well in May. We were completing interior framing. We were on schedule to substantially complete the construction in the middle of November. And we were starting to work on Lion Street Extension and preparing for a lot of asphalt work in June. So, that's what May looked like for transportation. At North Albany Elementary School, the modular arrived in May. And then also, at Waverly, we were finishing pad preparation and foundation for the modular to arrive in June.
I could actually just chime in real quick too. One thing I did want to point out is that HMK team has done a phenomenal job of managing the transportation facility, in particular, to the asphalt. As those costs have gone up, they've really found some creative ways to, to get more of the surface down in a timely fashion because we're seeing cost escalations at the first of every month right now. So, they've done an exceptional job of saving the district a lot of money by, by prioritizing and getting folks working on that.
Appreciate that. Thanks. I have a question. So, you mentioned that you were doing work for the modular that was to arrive at Waverly in June? Did it in fact arrive?
It did. It's there now.
So, Waverly and North Albany have both arrived, and I take it those will be ready when school starts?
Yes, we're, we've had a bit of a challenge at, at North Albany Elementary School. There's been a permit issue that we've been going around with the city, and so, we're still, we still have plans to open, finish before students arrive in September, but we're getting very, very close. We're not resolved with the city on a permit issue on that project. So, that's something, a conversation that started with Case and hopefully Andy as well here soon. So, we have time to have that conversation and still finish on time, but, you know, I'm gone from, from green to yellow, but I'm not quite red yet on, on that project.
Okay, I'd like, if, if it's appropriate, I'd like to be brought up to speed on that outside of this meeting.
Okay.
What the permit is and what the...
Sure.
And what about South Shore?
South Shore will open on time.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions?
None. Thank you, David.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, M two, Board Policy Section C, Superintendent.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Again, it's recommended by the committee to adopt the changes in Section C. All in this time.
I would, I would move approval as recommended.
I think that's just first look, so...
Yeah, these are just...
Oh.
Yeah, so I...
I'd love to expedite it.
Yeah, I get it. So actually, new business, the annual organizational resolution, Speaker Case, sorry about that. Skipped over it.
Correct. No worries. This is effectively a new fiscal year standard operating procedure. It's although, it's as though we thought you would actually approve of Jane as the new Director of Business and Finance, so she's listed prominently in there. But my understanding is that this is effectively a formality.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve annual organizational resolutions as presented.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, Mr. Gardner, so C, we've talked about. Board Policy Section D and Section F. These are just being brought up initially for everyone to review. Anything anybody would like to talk about for those?
Just my, my one question. We have already, you guys have already reviewed some of the policy rewrite and gone through to formal adoption with A and B.
Yes.
Earlier.
Okay. Well, not all parts of each of them, but majority, yes.
Okay.
There's still some being held out.
There's a teeny-tiny amount of stragglers.
Okay. And today, we just did E, right? So, yep. Okay. So future gender items, nothing listed. Other business, we have an executive session. Board will go into closed session. ORS 192.660. This is to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. We're going to have to clear the room, but you're more than welcome to come back when we vote on it. So we're taking a break here.
Okay, it's seven seventeen. We're going to move back into general session of board for DAPs. So first thing we need to talk about is action of the result of executive session. Does someone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before you go there, as I understand it, as it was announced prior to session, we went into executive session pursuant to RS 192662H, which is pending litigation or litigation likely to be filed. And that while no decisions were made in that executive session, the result of that executive session prompts this visiting of the issue by the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I allow, I move to allow the superintendent to accept the settlement agreement as presented between Greater Albany Public Schools and the Girding Builders on behalf of the school board.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
No.
Okay. I moved to, or anyone moved to adjourn?
Moved to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Everyone have a great day.